No, you're just being. I am recording this, so there's gonna be video. No, no, I'm just saying the video to back you up.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the July 18, 2024, meeting of the Cecil Township Planning Commission to order. Time now, I have seven oh two. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the June 20 meeting. Everybody have an opportunity to review those minutes?
Yes, I move to approve the planning commission minutes dated June 20, 2024.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries minutes approved. Alright, next item on the agenda is review of previous decisions. Jack, do you have anything to share with us this evening?
I do not. Dan, do you have anything?
No items are under old business, so we'll move on to new business. Item number one, application 2024-0013 Kaufman subdivision plan. Is anybody here representing?
You want to step up? Okay. Mr. Chairman, in front of you is the plan. It is. Can correct me if I'm wrong, but basically John's house is gonna be parceled off the rest of the farm. And I believe you're gonna attach a note that there's no additional building on that? Yeah, but once it's parceled off, the remainder is, there's gonna be no building on it? Okay, but no additional buildings are gonna go on there? Okay. Simple, simple, we've done this, Dan, do you remember the last time we did this? Dan, can you talk to your microphone? That's okay.
So, it's, this is a simple one lot subdivision. They're, they're actually just subdividing off the existing dwelling. They're gonna have a residual tract. There's a non-building waiver related to that, and that non-building waiver just says that it's not going to be used for the construction of a home unless there were sewage facilities installed. There's a couple minor comments on the plan that Mr. Mounds can address. But other than that, the only other comment we had was the sewage council should review this plan. Did the sewage council look at this note that Mr. Mounds put on the plan? Do you by a chance know? Okay. We just wanna make sure that happens, Jack. Just make sure the sewage council is okay with that note.
We haven't heard, we reached out to them and we haven't heard back from them, so.
Okay. So, if the board was inclined to consider it, you could just make a contingent upon the items in my letter and we'll get it addressed before the supervisors' meeting.
You'll send me a letter, so I know what I need to have done?
Yeah, I already sent it, I already sent the letter. You know what, you can have this one. It was sent to John Kaufman, 39 Grange Road.
Okay.
Yeah, we sent you a letter. If you'd like this, just make sure Mr. Mounds.
Copy one to Mr. Mounds as well.
Yeah, we copied Mr. Mounds also.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
I will make a motion to approve application 2024-0013 Kaufman subdivision plan contingent upon all items from the July 17 letter from Gateway Engineers are addressed prior to full approval.
I second the motion.
Alright, we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is application 2024-0015 Gillespie subdivision plan. Anybody here to represent the applicant?
Don't believe so.
So this one's, I can speak to this one. This one's a little more complicated. First off, it's located over on Vertical Drive. And I don't know, Jack, if you can call up Google Maps and maybe give the planning commission a picture of this one.
You okay if I do GIS?
Yeah, that works, sure. So, Vertical Drive is a private street, and currently there is a requirement within our ordinance that there are only allowed to be four residential lots off of a private road. So, as this was presented, when you look at it, there's, the first lots that Darnshrek, Colesia, Signiori, all three of those are not touching the road, so we didn't consider those as being along the road. So, Carter, Owens, Low, and then Lot 1, which is now Lot 1, used to include the piece that they're trying to make Lot 2 across the road? If that makes sense? So they'd be ending up with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lots technically in total off of the private road. So it says in the ordinance that you can't do that for residential without requesting a waiver for that requirement. So a waiver means that you can make the recommendation and supervisors can grant it. You don't need to do, it doesn't need a variance, which will go to the zoning hearing board. It's strictly a supervisor's decision and based upon the planning commission's recommendation. So, the other nuance to this is that, I don't know, Jack, if you can turn on the zoning for, on the GIS if you have that up. Oh, you have, you have Washington County's GIS up? Yeah, it's okay. So Lot number 1 is actually Zone C1, believe it or not. So the ordinance, the ordinance states that you, you can, there's no restriction on the number of commercial lots off a private road, only residential. So my letter reflects and says to them, to the effect, this is the biggest issue, that under, my first note, section 614 only allows four residential lots off a private road. The creation of Lot 2 from the subdivision, the fourth and final residential lot is created. The intent, it should say, if it is the intent to develop Lot 1 for residential use, a waiver must be granted by the board of supervisors. Otherwise, they have to add a note to the plan. So, that's really the biggest issue related to this one. There's some other minor comments. There was a previous recorded plan, and I don't know if Mr. Mounds even looked at it, but there was a lot more information on the previous plan. So we just asked for a number of those things to be put on there. In addition to that, they're going to need sewage planning, and I think I got a note from Liz today that that's still in process, Jack?
Yes, that's correct.
So, I don't know, it'd be nice to get some answers on the sewage planning on this one and find out what they're gonna do with Lot 1.
Okay.
I mean, that's just my thoughts. I wouldn't be, I don't think we're ready to push this one on yet.
Okay.
I was just going to ask if they had responded. I know the letter was just yesterday, but if they had responded in any way, shape, or form regarding intent on Lot 1?
I also.
Go ahead, go ahead, Barbara.
I also, I'm not familiar with the reasons behind the requirement of the limitation of four, only four lots. So I would wanna know more background about the spirit and reasoning for that and any additional burdens that this fifth parcel would.
Yeah, so there's a whole bunch of requirements related to it. You have to have an agreement for common maintenance of the private road. You have to worry about life safety issues related to creating, the more, the more lots you create off a private road, the more issues you could have. If it isn't plowed and the, and the police or the fire need to come in. So I think that's why the ordinance, our ordinance only limits it to four. And that's, that seems to have served the township okay for as long as I can remember, so.
My opinion is, is that I don't think we can make a recommendation without, A, having them here to answer questions, and then B, their responses to this comment letter would kinda tell the story. That would be helpful for us to go one way or the other, so I'm not sure we could do anything with this.
Yeah, and Dan, I'm sorry, I probably should have went back and looked at section 614 ahead of time for the meeting. So it's not referencing the zoning, it's just referencing the actual use of the property.
Residential use.
Okay.
And that chapter of zoning allows for waivers or modifications.
Yeah, so then I'm gonna have to agree with you on that, Lauren, and probably best if we table. Anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion to table application 2024-0015 Gillespie subdivision plan.
I second the motion.
Alright, motion to table, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Alright, application 2024-0016 Embassy Park conditional use.
Good evening, I'm Robert Ratcher. I'm the counsel for the developer, the owner of Embassy Park, and with me is Mark Kuntz, who is a representative of Embassy Park. And I'll let him speak to you in a minute about some detail of what we're doing here. Essentially, this is an existing office building that's located in the South Point complex. It's really two buildings that are, that are connected by two bridges, and so it really looks much like one building when you look at it. It's presently an office use. It's used entirely for office. The proposal, and of course, the zoning is in the SD special district. Embassy Park is interested in converting it to a residential building with co-working spaces. And that's one of the things Mark will get a little deeper into about what co-working spaces are. But it is the existing building. It's on, it's on 7.151 acres. There's a two-part process to change the use in your ordinance. The first part is a conditional use for the purpose of determining that the residential use can be obtained. And then provided that happens, then obviously it would be our responsibility to come back and present a site plan that, that would depict how the building would look with respect to that new use. There's a, there's a narrative in the conditional use application. I don't know if you've had time to read it. I'm not trying to give you a reading assignment, but it's pages 1, 2, and 3, and it's a really good rendition of exactly what the present use is, why they, why Embassy Park wants to turn it into the use that is being proposed. And I'm gonna let Mark come up and say a few words about that now, and then we can answer any questions.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mark Kuntz with Horizon Properties Group, representing Embassy Park Associates. As Bob alluded, yeah, we are looking at a potential conversion of that office building to include apartments, high-quality apartments on the upper levels of the building. It's a three-story building. We had built that building back in 2009, just right after kind of the financial crisis. It originally was a single, much larger building, but the way banks were in lending at that time, you know, financing was quite tough, quite restrictive. We ended up having to come up with a new concept and a plan to kinda move forward with the tenant that we had in hand at that point in time. So, at that time, we had pivoted, we created a phased building. So as you're looking at the plan, like I said, this front building, which is the, which is the front that faces Town Center Boulevard and the CNX Plaza, we built that building first, again, three stories, 65,000 square foot. And then a year or two later, we built the back building, which is simply a sister building to it. It looks identical on the front facade, but we have connecting bridges at the second and third levels on both of those buildings. So, it was a pretty, it was a tough time at that point in time to do that, to go from the bigger building that we wanna do to come up with this plan. But maybe in hindsight, it's kind of fortuitous of where we are here today, because as I think most of you know, the office world has changed pretty dramatically here in our post-COVID world. There is changes in the workplace environment. There is obviously change in how people work. You know, there's companies that went full remote. They just simply don't have an office presence anymore. There are companies that have partial remote or hybrid schedules. They work a couple days of work, work a week. We see the park, you know, typically very busy Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It feels like South Point of old. It's quite busy, but Monday, Fridays, you can feel it in the park. It's definitely quieter. And, you know, as we go through and we have our tenant renewals, we know we're very engaged with them, and we're always, always trying to keep them as tenants in our buildings. But companies are looking to get a little bit smaller footprint. They're looking to be a little bit more nimble. They don't have as many people in the office five days a week, so there is kind of a, you know, a softness in the office market, as you can imagine. So, we think it's the perfect time to take a look at some of the strategic buildings. This is, this seems to be the perfect building to look at that potential conversion from the, from the office use that it is today to apartments. We do intend to keep, we have a co-working brand that Bob spoke of. If you're familiar with like WeWork or Industrious or Regis, it's kind of a shared office space. It's where kind of the one-off person works. You have a small company of two or three people, and you have a little bit of a suite in a corner, but you share kind of office space and amenities and kitchens. We have that embedded in that building at about 20,000 square foot. We're intending for that to remain, because we think it's the perfect complement with these, you know, future tenants that are apartment tenants. They're single people, they're gonna be remote work for it. They have a place to kinda congregate to do their work, you know, during their, their hybrid work schedule. So, we are gonna keep that component to the building. Again, so that's why it stays commercial, but we're trying to overlap in this residential land use category that we talked about. Just going back, just a little bit of background, you know, South Point was planned in the, in the late 80s. South Point 1 was developed in the 90s, and South Point 2 in like the mid 2000s. You know, it was originally built as a live-work-play community. It is truly mixed-use. When you think about it, there's offices, there's hotels, there's golf courses, there's single-family townhouses, apartment, there's industrial buildings. Those are all following that SD district out of one of three zoning classifications, residential, commercial, and industrial. I guess the good thing that happened when the township created that ordinance, they gave consideration, hey, what happens if things change in the future? So if you go into the preamble of the SD district, and you'll see it in, in our narrative, there's kind of four points that it talks about. And I won't go through those, but the thing that you'll see when you read those, it's the creation of a coordinated living and working environment, and to provide a procedure which can respond to changes in market conditions. And that's really where we find ourselves today. The world today is different 2024 than it was 2019. So we're here before you tonight to kinda seek your hopefully concurrence and recommendation to add residential into our land use designation. As Bob indicated, this is just the first step. You know, we have lots of work to do. We have an architect, lab-based design, just been working on designs. We think we can locate about 100 to 120 apartments in that building. We've gotta create all the social spaces that come with that. You know, we're gonna create a pool area, we're gonna create amenities, we're gonna have, you know, movie rooms. We're gonna have things of that nature that all still need to be worked through, and we talked about, we'll be back for the site plan at a later date. And we hope that later date is in six months from now. I hope it's 90 days from now. Like I said, behind the scenes, we're already working on that, but first step is land use to make sure that we can make this conversion. Hopefully, we get your recommendation and can move forward with next steps.
It was one question on Dan's review letter, and I think we addressed it, but I just wanted to confirm that it is in fact addressed.
Yeah, my own, my review of this was just strictly that they met all the requirements of the application. It's not an engineering review. It's just, it was a content review. So in my opinion, they've, the application is complete. So if you want to make a recommendation, it's really a recommendation to set a hearing for conditional use. If you're, in a recommendation that it's, that you add the residential. I mean, you hear more and more, I just thought that, you know, you hear more and more about conversion of buildings, obviously Downtown Pittsburgh is the one that takes center stage, but you know, this is a lot of office space, and if you can get more people living here, that just seems to make, make good sense.
Of course, we'll answer any questions you might have too.
Just all interior improvements. Are you doing anything to the exterior?
Be open, Kenny. Yeah, we're still working through that. We probably will do some sort of addition for the clubhouse. At this point, we haven't found the right solution where the clubhouse component works, works well with it. Is there a way for me to advance this one drawing, Jack? Just the very next sheet is actually in a large kind of view of the development. It's in that same set. It's just like a second sheet. Oh, maybe, yeah, right there. This is just in a larger view, and again, I kinda talked about the two buildings. These are the two wings. In the center of this building, if you can see the cursor, is already an existing courtyard. Again, it lends itself. It almost looks like an apartment building when you look at it now in hindsight. So, we're looking at kind of what is the best location to locate the pool, the clubhouse. We obviously wanna make sure that gets the right amount of sun, so that could come into play. The thing I would tell you again, this, this, when we, this property has about 350 parking spaces today. After its conversion, it definitely doesn't need 350 parking spaces. So, even if we remove some of that to create a hub, to create some of these social spaces, outdoor areas, it's still obviously meet the code and parking requirements. So, I guess short answer is, probably will do some addition beyond the existing footprint of the building. We know that there's requirements for that setback, et cetera, and again, that would all be part of our site plan application.
Thank you.
I think I remember the original approval on this. And I, and I, and the thing that jumps out at me when I'm looking at it was that the secondary access negress is shared through the neighboring property.
There's another access.
Right.
This is our property here to the bottom of the page, 4,000 Town Center. We added that in as kind of just another relief point for the property, and that would remain as we go forward.
Yeah, I remember that being a discussion point with it, so yeah, I was just looking at it and seeing if there was different ways to secure the access without cutting through the other property or tie it in a different way, but while, while the other work is going on and kind of addressing that, I remember that being discussed it when this was originally approved.
Again, I think we're still working through it. Again, I think the thing that we have is, because it's two buildings, we can kind of phase work and phase activities where, again, haven't figured out the details fully at this point as we get through, but, you know, work may begin on the back building as we kind of vacate the tenants out of there. We're working with all the existing tenants that are in that, in that building today on those upper levels to locate them and our other properties. So, we'll have a plan on how we'll kind of, you know, move them through the different buildings for construction.
This is the building that Waynesburg University was in?
They were in this building.
A few, like a couple years ago.
Yes, correct.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
Not a concern, but if I recall correctly, there's some sort of, not an HOA, but some sort of overseer of all the properties, so are they involved in any of this?
Ultimately, yeah. There's, there's two property owners association. There's Spoa, what we call Spoa 1, the original, and then there's a Spoa 2, South Point 2 Property Owners Association. I'm on the South Point 2 Property Owners Association Board. Again, as part of this process, yeah, if there's a package that gets submitted to that board, again, we go into site plan approval and past reviews and past approvals, we will have a documentation to show that that board has approved it as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, we're just approving the application moving forward, not?
Well, I think you're, you should provide a recommendation. As the planning commission, you'd recommend, two things you'd recommend it. If you, for, are you for the recommendation to add residential to this particular property? And then secondly, you know, then that prompts the supervisors to set the conditional use hearing related to it. Is that right, Bob?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm I'm good, anybody else?
I'll make a motion to recommend uh, approval for application two zero two four zero zero one six, MC Park, conditional use. It looks like all of the items on the letter from July sixteenth for Gateway Engineers have been addressed. And it should go to the supervisors at this point.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, but like we can't comment on things like what Jason was saying, ingress and egress, like.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, I was getting ahead of myself on that.
Yeah, all the things that you were saying.
Yeah, well, I was thinking that now and 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 I had some other thoughts about uh, which we can circle back to in discussion.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
All right, application two zero two four dash zero zero one seven, Liberty Grove subdivision plan. Mr. Rank.
Hello, my name is Alan Rank. I used to be a resident of Cecil here. I now live in Florida and in the process of liquidating my holdings in the Pittsburgh area. I happen to own what is currently forty seven point six acres. That used to be the Nymphur Farm and it's on Rising Road. Originally, we had come with the prospects of making six one acre lots, but was denied for very good reasons, so I'm not upset about it. PennDOT and everybody else said can't do it. So we came up with another concept that we think is probably more applicable to the marketplace here. Uh, there's approximately six acres in addition to, you can see just in the dotted lines off on the right, that is the area that's reserved for water retention uh, ponds. Uh, I own all the way to the far right hand side there. That residual acreage, which is thirty six point some odd acres, it says that it's forty one on here, but that's a mistake. It's thirty six point seven seven acres that I will be selling to the person who bought my farm, Mr. O'Connor. We have submitted this to Midway Soar for review. It's on the force main. I personally installed the force main for my home, which Mr. O'Connor now resides in and carried the line all the way to the Lawford uh, properties, which is immediately to the left of where you see Lawford and uh, Nymphur and and Roy live, one more lot to the left. And the sewers are right on that property line. Uh, we'll be extending the uh, two inch force main through the properties to the back of lot ten as required by Midway. Uh, for any future expansion would be on the next neighbor. What we're going to be doing is placing these, these all meet the township code, twelve percent max grade on the cartway, six percent on the uh, the cul-de-sac and half acre plus lots. Each one of them exceeds that by a small amount. Uh, goal is to be building what would most likely be uh, high end uh, custom homes, uh, working with a company, Jim McIntyre, who has named this property Liberty Grove. He's got renditions of homes that he wants to be building in there and has seen quite a bit of interest in this type of a plan. I know we're still missing some details on here, but we submitted this to Dan for his review. I haven't, I live in Florida and I've been traveling, so I haven't heard whether or not you replied to Kim Gales on this uh, yet or not. But I wanted to come and just explain it and answer any questions you might have personally tonight.
Yeah, yeah, we did respond. Uh, it's as with any major subdivision plan, uh, this is a proposed public street, I'm correct, right?
Yes, yes, this will be built to public streets.
Yeah, so as it is a public street in a major subdivision, there's more scrutiny given to it. So so I do have a a letter, um, a multi-page letter related to some comments on it. Uh, I I don't, I don't see any, there's no fatal flaws in in what's being proposed with that, happened in my letter.
Yeah, you may have sent it to my home in Florida, it may be in transit or whatever.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah, so I I'll just kind of go through some of the comments uh, related to the to the uh, plan of lots. I guess the question was, are you going to have a homeowners association here?
Yeah, we will have a homeowners association. There will be no common facilities. The homeowners will be for maintenance and uh, uh, of the signage area. There'll be signage on the entrance to this and for the maintenance and upkeep of the detention water uh, stormwater management system.
Yeah, and they'll they'll also be responsible for any of this, the stormwater facilities outside of the right of way. Uh, we'll we'll make them put a note to that effect on the plan. So there's uh, with regards to the recorded plan, uh, there's just some notes, typical notes that need to be added to the plan. Well, also, this is a, this is a thing about cul-de-sac streets that the township wants to make sure that there's a place to plow snow and easement for plowing snow. Looks like there's the opportunity somewhere between uh, the two lots, there's a kind of a perfect spot there that 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 could be uh, that that could be occur, that could occur.
What what two lots you referring to, Dan?
Lots five and lot six.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, somewhere back there, there's going to need to be a a a snow plowing easement.
The easement, yeah.
Yeah.
Those are two of the bigger lots too, so if there has to be something, you know, they have, they have square footage.
Yeah, I mean, and easement would be just the right that people can't tell the township, we can't plow their snow there. So when you're plowing a, when you're plowing a uh, a street like this, if they push up the snow and the cul-de-sac can push around, they want a place to take it so they're not blocking people in.
Okay.
There's other easements required, reference monuments. Uh, this is also going to have, you're going to need cluster mailbox section here. The post office doesn't do mailboxes anymore, you know that?
Oh, I I didn't know that. That's, thanks for the update.
Yeah, so they typically require, will require one gang, sort of a gang mailbox or a uh, a cl- they call it a cluster box. So you'll need to create a little bit of an area in front of the one of the lots that people can pull off.
Probably between lot nine and ten right there.
I I wherever you think is appropriate, I I don't, I don't really have a a preference where it's really, you really have to get with the post office and see where they prefer to be.
Unless they've changed lately, their answer was, you can put it wherever you want, wherever you want. They, I mean, I'm I'm not being facetious, they they wouldn't even tell me how to number the streets the last time I went through this.
Well, you can go up into Windsor Woods or one of the other plans, I think McConnell Trails has some of them and see, see some of them that need to be there.
More than happy to do that.
Yeah, that that needs to be addressed. And then, just trying to see, in terms of the force main, are, do you have an easement from the adjoining property?
Yeah, the the existing property is, you know, this this doesn't show it, but there's the the lot that you're seeing right there that says Lawford, Nymphur, Nymphur is John Nymphur's red brick house that sits there, he has a bit of a ramshackle garage as well. And then the property line between him and his daughter Anna, the uh, manhole for the force main sits right on the property line. We already have an existing easement. We are going to do court, we're going to do horizontal boring under Mr. Nymphur's property, so there'll be no disturbance on his property whatsoever. And then once we get into lot one, we'll be open trenching.
So you already have the easement from Nymphur?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because she has on here proposed sanitary sewer.
Well, it's proposed because it's not there, the easement is there, but there's nothing in the easement.
Okay, she she has proposed on the eas- proposed easement.
Easement, okay, well, yeah, this part here, there is no easement. The easement exists on the property that has the Lawford, Nymphur name. Now, you can't see to the left of this, there is an easement that comes from the uh, Roy and Anna property, straight across John's and ends up right where that uh, dotted line.
So you do need to obtain an easement then from Anna and Charles?
No, no, that that easement exists. But that, these lots here are not on where the easement exists. The easement exists from the last manhole to this particular property.
So I think what Dan says, you need to show that easement on that neighboring property.
I I understand what he's saying, yes, so that, I understand that we need to sort of.
Yeah, we'll need to see a copy of that easement to make sure that it's a.
It's in the recorded plan, it's it's in one already.
And and McDonald is going to take over the force main?
No, Midway.
Midway, I'm sorry. So they're going to take over the force main and would they also take over the force main in the road?
They take over all the force mains beyond where the grinder pumps uh, tie in. We have to put a backflow preventer and a T we're working with and have gotten verbal approval from Trumbold up in the North Hill someplace. They're not real cooperative people, they're very slow to respond. They're like, they don't move at all, they're like glacial speed.
They live on Mars.
Yeah, they live in Mars, that's exactly right. But uh.
Mars PA.
Yeah, we uh, we've been working through them, Midway themselves, Keith uh, Straight, your counterpart at uh, whatever his firm is, and uh, Dave Coke, the uh, municipal manager there are both aware of and have said that they have capacity for ten more uh, ten more homes.
So so that force main's going to extend further to the right through lot ten, all the way down?
I am going to tell you that at my expense, I'm going to make sure that it goes there because the other property that I'm selling is something I want to discuss with you. So you can see where the dotted force main ends up on the right hand side of lot ten.
Yeah.
I want to extend it to that, and I think Midway would mandate that anyways.
So you're going to sell off the remnant of this and that person might do something with it?
I I don't know what they're going to do, but to prevent, I'm in it to make money, but I'm not, I don't want the last nickel and I don't want people who buy this to be upset because somebody comes through later and digs up their backyard.
Yeah.
So even if they didn't ask for it, I was going to do it.
Okay, and is is there a reason, I mean, and I just looking at this again, and I didn't comment in this in my letter, is there a reason that the pond is is not going to be a part of the that those lots, uh, that being lots ten, nine, and eight, that that they should be extended out to include the pond?
Well, I I I will leave it to your call out. My concern was if you include a pond that has water and somebody has a home in there and God forbid, somebody or something would get into the pond and drowned, it's really not those individuals' responsibility, it's the homeowner's responsibility. I wanted, and if and if it doesn't go this way, I'm open toward, I thought it would be a cleaner deal to dedicate that area that's that's lightly shaded in there with the dotted line to dedicate that to the HOA and just make it a uh, you know, a a common responsibility of the HOA, not a landowner.
Yeah, I'm, I I think, I think that that's advisable, but I guess my point is that 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 probably needs to be a fee simple lot.
Yeah, they that we, when when I met with Kim on Monday, she had not yet heard from you. I told them to please indicate that that would be a tax uh, application lot that, you know, would have to be called out on the tax maps.
Well, yeah, she did, on on the recorded plan, she still shows it as being on the remnant lot.
I don't, I don't know what you mean by the recorded plan.
Well, oh, this is the recorded plan, so this is what you'll sell lots with.
No, this is what we did and then we came up with the idea. I said, I don't want to do this, I want to make sure that that shows up.
Okay, so she's going to revise.
Right, she, I met with her Monday afternoon.
Okay.
She said she was expecting to receive your letter Tuesday or Wednesday. I've been back in Florida, so I didn't talk to her.
Well, this is the plan we're looking at, so that's good.
It would be the same meets and bounds, it would just be called out as a lot eleven that would then stay with the HOA.
Yes, and that would be owned by the HOA.
Yes, is that what you'd prefer?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to prefer.
Yeah, because you don't, we we can't have an easement on somebody else's property for the pond, it should be a, they're, it's going to need to be that way from D E P standpoint too, they'll want it that way. Yeah, that's fine.
It has to be HOA, HOA owned.
Somebody's got, somebody's got to own it.
Yeah, the HOA, right, yeah.
Okay.
And then we are, by the way, in addition to that, going to show an additional easement because you can't tell on this map, but if you go to one of the topo maps, the uh, they call it the 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 stream. There is no stream, it's a wet water stream, but the discharge of this will have a, automatically have an easement granted off a partial A to the low point of that that stream that would be, give or take, right underneath the the uh, square feet areas of the of the lots.
Yeah, it needs to go.
She doesn't show it here, and I told her I wanted that to be indicated on the new one.
Right, right, yeah, that's taking from the pond to the discharge point.
Right, right, I didn't want the buyer to be surprised when somebody, you know, didn't want to drop a ditch or drop a pipe in the middle of his property that he's going to try to traverse at some later date.
Uh, a- as it goes with the uh, like the this road is, the road itself is a twelve percent grade road. It's coming down to touchdown onto Rising Road.
Yes.
Uh, PennDOT will have something to say about that connection point, so they don't need a, they don't need an H O P permit for that connection as a local road.
They've applied for that, that if you recall, that was the reason the first concept was denied. We wanted to have six within six hundred feet and they said, nope, can't do it, and we said, okay, change the direction.
Yeah, and I I she she doesn't, it's it's not clear on the plan. They they have sort of a a miniature profile on sheet uh, eleven of eighteen.
You're talking about the road profile?
Yes.
Yes.
That's going to need to be significantly changed to show more detail because
Yes.
that 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 road off of Rising Road, PennDOT's requirement is you have to descend at a certain grade, a certain distance.
Back from the road.
You can't drain onto their road, you have to descend and then they'll create a low point there back at that station where those catch basins are.
I think they've alr- I I know that they've already worked on it because I brought that to their attentions. I didn't understand it, but if if you look at eleven, it's such a compressed drawing.
Yeah.
Uh, I I found out later that the draftsman that was assigned to this is no longer employed by them, so they had some issues.
Okay.
That's what we were rectifying on Monday.
Okay, good, all right, that was, that was one of my comments too. Uh, there's some other requirements in here that you can read through, uh, the, on the geotechnical side of things, uh, has has she run the cut and fill numbers on this at all?
She did, but we're modifying them to a degree.
Does it balance?
It's pretty much anything that doesn't balance, we have an an off-road disposal site that doesn't require anything here that would go to the top of the hill where they where the turnpike had a topsoil pile and and thing that if there was excess fill, it would just run with rock trucks up to the top and be dispensed.
She's going to need to include a plan.
Well, if if they, if it gets to that, we would include that.
Okay, well, I I you probably should plan for it. I'm just, I'm just telling you, based upon current permitting regulations, if you run an incidental call or acid producing rock, uh, they'll make you deal with that as a part of this. You haven't gotten to the point where you submitted the MPDS permit.
Uh, no.
Yeah, so that's a whole other permit process that's gives much more scrutiny than this, the township does, right?
This is a learning curve for me, it was never this complicated in the past.
It's super complicated now, I'm just trying to give you the, give you the heads up.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so I I would just be prepared for that. So typically, in terms of when you do cut and fill, there's some testing done or at least some test holes to make sure that the grades and stuff, that that things can be built here as as proposed. We'll need some indication of of some testing on the geotechnical side of things that things can be built. And that's really for those low side lots, so you're creating, you're creating on the low side lots that are going to require fill to be useful? Uh, and that's really for those low-side lots. So you're creating, you're creating on the low-side lots that are gonna require fill to be useful? You know, in other words, they have to take it, cut it from the high side, bring it to the low side.
Right.
Compact it. So what you have to do is you have to cut in keyways and benches to support that fill. So you want some sort of an ideal on that, on your plans before you get them approved.
Okay.
So, Kim, when she sees that comment, if there's any questions, you can ask me about it, but
Yep.
Uh, there's some notes that need to be added to the plan. Um, so, a- and I think some of the details need to be worked out. Jack, will we be able to get the fire chief to look at this for a fire hydrant, where he wants the fire hydrant? I would assume we need a fire hydrant somewhere along here.
Yeah, that's four hundred, it's four hundred and eighty feet from the, uh, Rising to the back of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I'm not sure where the first, any fire hydrant is along Rising.
Dan, that was, that was one of my questions, if the cul-de-sac is big enough, because that doesn't, uh, they have to be able to turn a fire truck around in that thing.
It's, it's gotta be a standard township call or something.
Eighty foot is what you call in your, in your, uh.
Yeah, I'm not sure where the closest hydrant is to there. I mean, if there's not one immediately adjacent, one at the entrance would probably suffice, but that's chief's call.
Right.
Yeah, there's a hydrant, there's a hydrant right there at the, at the, on the lower left-hand side across the road, but, you know, that's the only one I know of.
Maybe where the, uh, pull-off ends up being for the cluster box, throw a hydrant right there.
And, and the water company's fine, they can give you adequate pressure and service the plan?
Uh, the guy who's built, doing the development work has been in contact. I haven't, so I can't speak for that.
Okay. Is there any other utilities? You bringing in gas?
Gas, yes, gas is coming.
Electric and all that other stuff, so.
And what we'll be doing is we will be, uh, taking some of the overhead wiring that's, there's a pole.
There's a pole right in the middle of the road, yeah.
There's a pole down there where that, uh, that forty-one thirty-eight call-out is on the lot one. That'll remain, and then there'll be two poles that'll be taken out, and then it'll be brought back up on the backside of lot ten to the overhead.
Yeah, and, and there, I, I don't know if you have it, but there's, there's supposed to be, you'll, you'll need service letters from the utility, all the utilities, plan to service the development, that they can service the plan.
Okay, I, yeah, we, I know we have it from, uh, the gas company, because they're in design process right now.
Did, did we approve a planning module for this already, the sewage?
If you recall, when we submitted this originally, you and I talked, and then was denied, it was, it's, I, you're, you're talking some things that I think I know a little bit about, but I can't speak, you know, entirely as a professional.
It's really the DEP's approval of the sewage?
Yeah, well, the, it has, this is, this is going through the Midway Sewer Authority.
Right.
They, they've given us a capacity letter. That's one of the things I understand they need, and then we had to come up with the hydraulics on the individual force main grinder pumps. I don't know what you need beyond that, but that's why I'm letting Kim do it.
We don't need any, the only thing that we need is, we need verification that Midway's going to service it.
Yes, we have that.
And then, um, from the township's perspective, we'll, we'll need to approve a planning module, which is the township's way to say, this is the sewage plan for this part of the township. Kim knows about that. I mean, it's just, you can't, you can't record a plan until that sewage is approved.
She was, well, this is why I think the, I think the holdup on that whole thing is the Trumbold organization.
Okay.
The E-one pumps, you know, the, the, the sellers of the E-one pumps do the engineering on them. That's what we're waiting on. She said that she had it. They, they actually came to their office two weeks ago and reviewed this, so she was waiting for the final, uh, I guess you'd call, you know, letter of approval from them, that this could all be feasible.
Yeah, and a- again, just, I mean, from a higher, from a higher level, the planning module is DEP's a way of showing that this plan is adequately served by sewer. So in other words, Midway has enough room at their plant, they have enough room in their lines, and they can take the development on. So DEP has to review all that information, and then give it the thumbs up. That's the planning module approval.
Okay.
It's a multi-pronged process. It has fifty different forms, and, and it needs to be approved by the Board of Supervisors at Cecil to, to officially send it to DEP.
All right, I'll mention that to Kim tomorrow.
Yeah, she knows all about it, but I mean, so I, I, what I don't, what I want you to understand is, like, I mean, she'll be able to address most of my comments, but I, I would be reluctant to push this on to the board. You know, we, we have a requirement to approve something within a certain period of time, ninety days.
Okay.
We have to approve an application once it comes in. If we don't know that the, the major issue like sewage has an approval, the DEP doesn't want us approving a plan that doesn't have sewage approval.
I, I, I'm not gonna lie to you and tell you we have everything you need. I know that we're, we're in the process of getting it. I, I can't tell you, you know, that it's been, I don't know that there's any stumbling blocks other than the bureaucratic time delay.
Yeah. Well, we would at least need confirmation from Midway in a form of a letter.
That we have.
They're going to accept.
We, we can have, we can have that letter. We've already talked with them. They're ready to issue that letter without any problem, because we submitted to them for review, oh, eight months ago, when we were doing the other lots. We actually submitted to them back when we were doing forty-eight lots. There were supposed to be forty-eight lots on this plan.
Right.
On the whole thing.
Yes.
And when I got involved with it, I found out that the one detention pond turned into three, a crossing which requires an act of God and Moses walking across water to get across it, and some other stuff, and I just kiboshed the whole thing.
Sure.
And that's why I'm selling this, because there's demand, and it leads to my next question. The other residual property, which I have a copy of the plans there, I know you didn't get, you may have got one. I was there, I'm one in here, Jack, it's thirty-five acres. It's the, it was, it was called page two of this.
It's probably part of the subdivision plan, Jack.
It's not part of that great big book. I know that.
It's probably, oh.
That's the big one. It's not in there, because I, I went and, and I think this was the result of the gentleman being terminated when they found out what he didn't do, when he said he did it.
Well, the first, the first sheet shows the existing conditions plan.
No, there, no. Mike.
Jack, go to plan a recording. Go up that one. There you go. There might be multiple sheets there.
Yeah, yeah, there it is. There it is. Okay, yeah, there, it, it is in there. So, which leads me to my next question. I knew this was gonna take a lot more time, because it's more tedious and more, and, you know, it's more intense on what you need to have. What I wanted to do was take partial A, which is, I will tell you right now, it's mislabeled. They forgot the five acres already left. Where it says it's forty-one point seven, seven oh nine, it's four, it's thirty-six point that. And this big piece of property, this big piece of property has two methods of ingress and egress. On the right-hand side, there's about three hundred feet of, uh, right-of-way, and then there's a seventy-five foot right-of-way on the other side of the Anna Lawford. In fact, if you see the property, the two lots there, the existing sewer line is on the one between them. The easement goes across that property to the immediate left of the plan.
Now, you're gonna lose some of that three hundred feet there, because you've gotta add that pond in.
Oh, I know that. I'm just saying, but, so that's why I'm giving them, that's, besides that, that's the only flatland we had to put a pond on. We haven't got any water that learns to stick to a hill very well, so we're gonna put it down there. And, uh, but what I wanted to do is sell this partial A, and I don't know whether, I, I, I sort of don't know whether the cart before the horse or what hap- what I have to do first.
You could do, you could just submit a two-lot subdivision plan.
Yes. That's, that's what I was wanting to do, with the exact same parameters, with the addition of the, the call-out of the detention pond. And then, I, I would like to facilitate a sale to Mr. O'Connor, because that can go directly to him in a clean and green format, because it's more than ten acres. It's already clean and green. He's got sixty acres that's already clean and green. We want, you know, we're just gonna.
Is he not gonna build a pond?
No, he has no desire to build.
Is he gonna put an on-building waiver on it for the time being for sewage?
He said he'd do, he has no plans on building. I do know that there, there, you know, it's a big enough property that if ever he had to put a septic in, he could do it, and there's also access to, at that seventy-five foot right-of-way to the left of the property, there is the sewer line already existing going through there. So if ever he would, why he would do it, because it'd be a thousand-plus foot of, you know, force main, but he has no desire. He owns fifty of that acres. He wants to buy this just because he has lots of toys that he plays with, and he's got a lot of grandkids that he takes for rides up there. And that, I was just there the other day with him, so he has, I mean, if you, if, if that's what it requires, because there will not be providing any, uh, other than roadside services, there will be no utilities to the, to the, all that rest of that property, which then becomes landlocked up against the turnpike and his property. Um, he, he, you can see there's a great big adjacent, th- this, however you do this, right here, th- this, uh, where is that?
So, so.
This, this line here is the common property line that we would mash together.
Well, I mean, you could do, like I said, you could take the area where Liberty Grove Drive is and not show any of those lots, and just show it as one big chunk. So that'd be lot one.
And add in the, and add in the detention pond?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'll do.
And any easements you need off of him in the future.
Okay, I can do that.
And then you'd have to put an on-building waiver on, on parcel, whatever we wanna call that, the big piece.
Right, that, if, if we make that lot eleven or twelve.
There'd have to be a note on the sm- on the, on the other chunk that the, the plan couldn't be further subdivided unless there's sewage facilities approved.
Okay, now, non-building means that he can't build anything without coming to you first and asking to say?
Uh, it's a standard DEP note. In fact, I talked about it earlier on the plan, on another plan.
Oh, yeah, about the guys with the barn and stuff, on the building with no sewage.
Yeah, there's, there's a non-building. There's a standard, and it basically says, um, you know, uh, purpose of the plan is for agricultural use. No portion of the property has been approved by Cecil Township or the Department of Environmental Sources for the installation of sewage facilities, no sewage filler, no sewage facilities, no sewage permit will be issued for the installation, construction, connection of any sewage, da, 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 da. Um, unless the municipalities and DEP have approved sewage facilities, planning for the property subdivision. So it's basically saying, you can't do anything until you come back and get a sewage approval.
And as his indication is, he has no desire to do that, and.
As long as he's able to accept it with that, that note.
Okay, so we need to do.
Kim knows what that note is. She, non, non-building waiver.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Uh, I think so.
Sorry to be so confusing here. Do you happen to have a copy of what you said, or, or can you email me a copy of that to my email? Because I, I did not get it.
Yeah, I'll send you the, I'll send you the, uh, you mean the letter, my letter?
Your, your commentary letter, yes.
Sure.
Yeah.
Your, your emails, I didn't, was your email on the application?
I don't know. I mean, I, I.
I don't think it was.
Huh?
I don't think your email was on the, your address was on there, but not your application, your Florida address.
Yeah, is this carbon copy? Oh, that's my Florida address, yeah. So you think it already went out as of the seventeenth yesterday?
Yeah, that's fine. You can have that copy, and I mean, I'll, I'll be glad, I mean, Kim has it, or, uh, she has her down for the email.
Okay. All right, well, that's, I appreciate that, and thank you. Look forward to coming back.
Well, we'll just, let's, before we, before we go, so
Sure.
Just so we're orchestrating this correctly, and you understand, you have a current application that's on board. You have no sewage approval for that yet or anything like that. You wanna move forward with the big one first.
I'm, I'm, that's why I'm asking you. That would be the recommended way to do it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that's what I would do, rather than wait on everything else, because it's gonna take you a long time to get the other, all the permits you need to get the other one going.
Okay.
So I, I would do the two-lot subdivision. I would give Liz a letter on this application that says you're giving us an extension of time.
Okay.
Uh, and she has a standard letter that she can help you with.
Okay. I'll be done Monday. I'll be here Monday.
To do that.
Yeah.
And then, and then you would need to make application for this two-lot subdivision that you wanna do. You'd have to come back to the Planning Commission next month with that, and then it could go to the supervisors.
What's your date for cutoff for next month's meeting? Tomorrow at noon?
I mean, I, I, it's, it's, we already have, I'm, I will work with you on that.
All right, I'll get, I'll, I'll, I'll work on that. They have it here early next week at the latest.
All right, Jack, I mean, I don't, I don't speak for Jack.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think you, you guys get a motion to table this.
Yeah.
I think so. Anybody wanna make that motion?
I move to table application number two zero two four dash zero zero one seven, Liberty Grove subdivision plan.
I'll second.
And we have a motion to table and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Thank you.
Jason, before you move on, I, I, I was, my memory's not very good. Because at the supervisors' meeting, they did approve the technology drive, uh, parking addition, if you recall that one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They approved that. Uh, they approved the pickleball development, and they approved the Graziani site plan. And the technology drive, there was a subdivision for that parking lot, too. So there were four plans that the board approved last month, which I think you approved at the previous meeting.
Yeah, so everything we approved, they, they approved as recommended. That's perfect. Thank you. Um, on discussion, I just had a, a thought on, as, um, which plan was it? Embassy Park conditional use. Um, we've already got some residential in there. They wanna add more. I'm, in my mind, I'm, I'm okay with the concept, but just thinking out loud, uh, it's a conditional use. It's an opportunity. I'm not sure if this is the right time or place to bring it, bring it in at, but just to get the overall gears turning on it. Um, what about like park facilities and enhancing existing park facilities as we continue to add residential, um, within our community? As making recommendations to the Board of Supervisors as we, as we move forward. You know, we have an opportunity here where you have an applicant who wants to make a conditional use application, uh, conditions can be placed upon it, um, even if it's nothing in South Point, but a, a, um.
Like an impact fee for them?
Yeah, like an impact fee of some sorts, um, in this situation, so that, uh, to allow the township to better provide for recreational facilities for residents as we continue to expand residential, um, offerings within the township, especially high density. I mean, they're, they're looking at building stuff right there in there. They won't have a clubhouse. They won't have a pool. That's great for those residents, but what about the rest of the residents?
The only thing that I, I might caution you with is that, in terms of doing that, and I'm not the solicitor, but my experience is that you need, you need to probably have a comprehensive rec plan done, just like you have a comprehensive plan. You almost need to have a rec plan in place that could justify what impact fee you're gonna charge. In other words, you look at all your parks, expansions, whatever, and you come up with some number. But it's a good point. I, I don't disagree with you. I think that that's, that's, that's good foresight to, to have, but, but I think there's, there's a plan, intermediate planning step without just kind of throwing crap at the wall. Just like a traffic, just like a traffic impact fee, you have to do an elaborate study by statute. I, I, I don't, I mean, I'm not a professional planner. I know enough to be dangerous, but, but that might be something, I mean, you know, Jack could inquire about that, or, or, you know, take a look at that and see.
I would say without that plan, it would go into, uh, potentially an unreasonable condition, and we wouldn't wanna to go down that path either.
No, and, and I'm, and I'm, and I hear what you're saying. Is it, is it, is Danger your middle name, Dan?
Danger, yeah.
So it's really justification for. So it's really justification for charging, like, what would this go towards? Justification for the impact fee and the number that's.
And you'd, and you'd have to apply uniformly to all residential.
I just, I, you know.
I mean, I re, I have townships that I represent that actually have a recreation fee, that if you don't provide, like, you can write into your ordinance, if you don't provide recreational on-site, now, it sounds like they're gonna have recreational on-site. They're gonna put a pool and other things in, then you have to either provide it on-site, or you pay a fee, into a fee.
I just, i- and, and I wasn't saying necessarily that we had to get it going on this. I just, it got the gears going in my, in my head, that, you know, we continue to see the township be further and further developed. And, you know, the, things, you know, the, the best time to plant a tree was twenty years ago, right? Uh, the, the best time to si, to obtain a piece of property, to, to have a park for the future, was probably also twenty years ago.
No, that's not true, the township has a nice piece of property up on Clinger Road. That's a future park up there.
Sure.
A portion of that, yeah.
Sure, but I'm just saying, i- but where's the money gonna come to develop that?
Right, right, that's a good point.
So, that, that's just things that, it, I think that we need to continue to think about, as we look at the recreation, you know, all the things that we're supposed to be looking at as part of the comprehensive plan. You know, we need to be planning for the future, and I think continuing to look at ways to make sure that we have adequate recreation facilities for our residents, uh, is something that we need to consider.
What I, what I think, if that's something the Planning Commission feels strongly about, what you should do is you should make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, that when budgeting time comes up, that they budget for, for, uh, seeking proposals for a comprehensive recreation plan as a first step to that process. So that's what typically people do, they'll do a plan, out of that plan will come recommendations, costs, things like that, and then you could tactfully, you know, put a, so, first thing starts with a plan.
There, there, there is a source of money that is out there. It's the impact fee money that the township gets from oil and gas development every year. So it'd be nice to understand if there's money in the rainy day fund, or, you know, it could be allocated for that type of recreational use, any really improvement use to the township.
Well, we did, Cindy was successful to help get money from DCNR for the connection of the trail.
Montour Trail, yeah.
Trail to South Point, so, I mean, that was a recent one, and.
Yeah, that was really good.
Yeah, and there's other, I mean, there's other opportunities to do things at Clinger Park, there's some land there that could be used.
Yeah, I mean, I look at like, you know, you have Clinger Park, you know, Cecil Park, Hendersonville Park, um, even going over to Southview. You know, there seems to be like, th- they're all on the trip, all the existing, pretty, not all the existing parks on the township, but majority of the existing parks are on the township, and, you know, tying them together some way, and, and connecting that and enhancing that, I think, would be something that's nice, but that's getting the cart ahead of the, the horse, you know, it's just, um, I, I think it'd be nice to make a recommendation to the township to, you know, start looking ahead at that, and figuring, and having a plan, so that we can start figuring out what funding we need to make that plan a reality.
Yeah, the plan will dictate what funding you need, and then what funding you have, and where you can get funding from.
So, um, I'll be happy to make that as a motion, that we make a recommendation to the township, to the Board of Supervisors, to, um, future, place in the future budget for, uh, funding for a comprehensive recreational use plan.
Comprehensive rec plan, yeah.
Rec plan.
Yeah. And you might wanna just include in there, or, or, I mean, you could have, you could write a letter to the, to the supervisors and give them the basis for why you think that's, I mean, I think your why is a good.
Yeah. Yeah, it's something I've thought about for a while, I think it was something that was on my mind, for sure, when we were doing the comprehensive plan itself. And, uh, this, this project here, for some reason, just got the gears turned on it again, and.
How did we, how did we end up addressing recreation in the comp plan? I, I got the, I got the website up in here right now. I think it's in there.
I believe there was something in it, I believe there was something in it regarding, um, shared green space in any developments that occurred. But also, I think there was a percentage of green, either green space, or park space, or shared space, I forget the, the wording for it. But I wanna say there was a percentage that was required, whether it was in residential or commercial.
And I wanna say there was some generic, I don't, I don't know, generic might be a little bit of a harsh word, but generic language to the effect of that we wanted to look for opportunities to enhance our existing facilities and add to them, um, whenever we could.
Jack, where's that comp plan hidden? I know it's here.
It's, um, I pulled it up. It's Washington.
Under government. Government.
Board of Supervisors, two, twenty, twenty-three Cecil Township.
Oh, it's under Board of Supervisors, okay. There it is, comp plan, yeah. Think it would have been under.
Think it's down.
Recommendations.
No, it was, it was down the next page, Dan, I think you were actually there. Keep going, next page down, communities, facilities.
That was staffing.
I think that's where it starts, but I thought it continued with services, and I could be wrong. Other recreational assets.
So there's strategies, if you go all the way to goal, table six, goal one, um, community assets, parks and recreation, it says completed comprehensive parks and recreation plan. There you go. So it's already in the comp plan.
So I think it's time to move that forward.
Throw the community parks, it's the number one.
The recommendation is to follow the plan. How about that?
Seek grant funding, create marketing materials to highlight the unique destination within the township.
It's a ten-year plan, and I think now's the time to go ahead and move forward with that step.
Almost a year, too, so, yeah, okay.
What I'll do is I'll forward the spreadsheet I created based on this, um, about four years ago, and, uh, you can take a look at how I broke it down. I just took everything here and put it, uh, pretty much in a linear check sheet type thing.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Works for me, Jason.
There's a motion on the table?
Second.
Not William's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.